I'm unmuted. All right, y'all probably been hearing me chatting here, so we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's a little bit past 6:30, but we're gonna get through this together. I appreciate everybody's patience. And also, I want to congratulate Casey Owens on her election and welcome her as everybody else has. And with that, I would like to ask Commissioner Joseph Stotts, would you please let us in the invocation?
Yes, let us pray. Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you so much for us being able to assemble together to make good decisions on behalf of the county. And we ask that you continue to watch over us during our process of looking at each issue individually and always putting the issue and the people of the county above our own interests, above our own opinions, and always be looking out for what's in the best interest of the county. And we pray that you'll be with everybody here today, that we're able to work together on all these issues, and then we're able to find a common sense solution and work to the betterment of the county, and Christ's name we only pray, amen.
Amen. And I know we can't see each other, but hopefully you have a flag somewhere handy nearby. Let's join together and let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Thank you. Lisa, if you would, please call the row.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl D. Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
David Dunlap.
Here.
Reckland.
Here.
Deborah Evans.
Here.
Steve Glenn.
Here.
Stephen Hilton.
Here.
Robert Hennessy.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Daniel Owens.
Here.
Casey Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater. Gary Prater. Christie Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Tyrone Spartman.
Here.
Stotts.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Joel Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Gary Prater. I know he was there just a minute ago, so I'll be in present.
Okay, he should chime back in here shortly. He may have lost connection. Gary Prater.
Gary Prater. Mr. Chairman, we need to send him a text. He may not know he's off.
Would you do that for me? All right, while we're trying to contact Commissioner Prater, now at this time, the next item is adoption of docket.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to amend the docket.
All right, we have a motion to amend the docket. What is that motion, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to approve first.
That is correct.
I'll make that motion.
I second that motion.
Who made the motion?
Scott Ruble.
Commissioner Ruble made a motion to accept or adopt the docket, and it was seconded by who?
Michael Bell.
Michael Bell. Now Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir, that's my make a motion to amend the docket to change to item one, to decide the format and location for the October 19th Full County Court Meeting.
Okay, so you want to make that the first item of business?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Item number one. That is my motion.
All right, we have a motion to make the first item of business to set the format of our October meeting. And now the second from Commissioner Owens. Would anybody like to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like some clarity on that, if Ms. Brown would care to discuss.
Yes, Commissioner Brown.
Well, I would like for us to make a decision as, well, really the decision makers is you, Mr. Chairman, and with Mr. Haley, to decide exactly the location and the format of what your plans are. And I know things could change, but what your plans are for our October meeting, because it could have an influence on how people vote tonight on some discussion items, whether it goes through tonight or not. So I think it would be important that we already know if we're going to be able to entertain the idea of having an in-person meeting at the Administration Building or not. Is that what you were asking, Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Well, I don't. Mention the possibility, and I would ask Executive Haley to, if he would, to speak on that, on that, on that position of meeting in person or not.
Well, Mr. Wiltshire, if this goes on the docket under item one, I would think that would be the time that the two of you would go ahead and make that discussion and make that decision recommendation at that time. I don't know if we really should be discussing my motion right now. I don't think we should be doing that.
Chairman, Wiltshire.
Yes, Commissioner Owens.
I think that was Mr. Hilton.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, we will vote. All right.
Mr. Chairman, we would need to change item number one to, I'm assuming, one A.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor of this motion, and that is the motion to have item number one to discuss how and where we will meet in our October meeting as a full county commission. All in favor, say aye. Nobody opposed? And I'm not sure if Commissioner Prater has joined us yet. But if he hasn't, then that would be, I guess, 23, wouldn't it, Lisa?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, you're right. We still have one commissioner that's not with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that will go with your permission, Commissioner Brown. We could put that as item one A.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Now we're back on the original motion to approve the docket.
I make that motion, Carleen Bolden.
Well, we already have a motion, we have a second on that. It has been amended, so at this point, we will be back on the original motion amended. So we're voting on the docket as we voted to amend it with item one A added. Does everybody understand that? Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. All right, the next item up is to elect the chairman of the county commission for this next year.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner England.
I'd like to nominate Blaine Wiltshire.
We have a nomination for Blaine Wiltshire for chairman. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion, Carl E. Bolden.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I make a motion, nomination ceased, and we elect by acclamation.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Michael Bell to cease nominations and vote by acclamation, and second by, I believe, Commissioner.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, next is the reading of the minutes, and hopefully you have. Yes, Commissioner Savage.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the reading, that we accept the minutes as written and suspend the reading of those minutes, sir.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Savage, we have a second from Commissioner Ron Lee, that we accept and dispense with the reading of the minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. All right, next is public comment. And I haven't been notified of any public comment. Executive Haley, do we have a public comment?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, no one made that request for this meeting.
All right, thank you. Next, we will go to our county executive for special recognition.
Yes, for the full commission, these last few months have been a challenge, I know, for all of us. And, you know, the August election was no exception. And the last couple of months with information changing daily. The August election, under the direction and supervision of Director Susie Davenport, did an exceptional job, her and her staff, and those persons who were recruited to work at the polls, and the volunteers who assisted. And so I wanted to do this in an August meeting, but we're doing it for September, so I can recognize Susie Davenport and the Election Commission and her staff for the exceptional job that they did in the August election. Of course, as we move forward with the November election, the challenges are still there. Her office is still inundated with requests for mail-in ballots and absentee ballots, with the direction from the state changing almost daily as well. And so we have this November election coming up, and I will say that her committee and her commission and her staff have worked late hours in order to make sure that the November election will be as flawless as the August one for the local electorate who wishes to cast their ballots in person or by mail or absentee ballot. So I want to commend her and her staff. And Secretary of State Trey Hargit will be on my Ben Lomond show next week explaining the election in November, and Ms. Davenport will be also on there joining me to explain locally what we'll be doing in order to make sure that everybody's vote is counted and that the election goes as planned. So I want to thank Susie Davenport and her staff and give them that shout-out.
Thank you. Next, Executive Haley, is the proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Yes, I'm not gonna read this whole thing to shorten the meeting, but September is normally the month that we recognize Suicide Prevention Month, and so I drafted a proclamation that I read on my BLTV the last week in August to bring awareness to the fact that, especially during these trying times of the pandemic and the emotional stress and trauma that's put on everyone, we do want to recognize that September is Suicide Prevention Month, and we encourage all Tennesseans to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family and friends, and genuinely convey their appreciation for the existence in any gesture they seem appropriate to make sure that everyone feels that every life is important, whether it be through a single phone call or message or a handshake, whatever you have to do to bring the emotional support to those individuals who are suffering every day in some cases, and particularly with this pandemic on hand. So, you know, Tennessee is a national leader in this effort, and those counseling agencies that are here across the county and in the school system, and our Public Health Department do an exceptional job in making the hotlines available and to make sure that everyone's life is deemed important and the support network is there. So I'm not gonna read the proclamation, but we do want to recognize that it is important and our community to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Haley. Next, we will go into our elected official department reports, and first is the county executive's report for September 2020.
Yes, this county executive Haley emailed out later this afternoon an updated version of my executive report, so you can read it if you've got any questions about it. You can call my office, and I've already received some feedback via email, so feel free to contact Mrs. Sweetin in my office or myself if you've got any questions about it. Thank you.
Okay. And what we can do, you know, if we need to, Robert, you may chime in on this. We could entertain a motion to accept that, but not approve it due to the fact that, I know I haven't got to look over it myself because I was transit this afternoon when it was sent out, and, you know, I would like to look over it, and I'm sure there's maybe others that may not have had a chance yet to look at it. Would that be acceptable, Robert?
Yes, that's fine.
All right.
I make a motion to accept the county executive's report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. We have a motion to accept the county executive's report, and we have a motion is from Commissioner Brown. I believe the second was from Commissioner Ruble.
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next item is the Finance Department report, uh, Director Cotton.
Yes, uh, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to have, answer them at this time.
Move, adopt.
We have a motion from Commissioner Lee to adopt the Finance Director's report.
Second by Robert Hennessy.
Thank you, Robert, we have a, uh, second from Commissioner Hennessy. Anyone want to speak to that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Lisa, I'm not trying to speak for you either, I'm sorry. Warren County Highway Department quarterly report, uh, submitted for August meeting. It's the next item.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
From Commissioner Bell and a second from Commissioner England to approve. Anyone want to speak to those motions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question I'd like to ask, somebody might know. Why is it that the burned trailer on Highway fifty-five outside of Morrison is still on the side of the highway?
I would assume that's a state highway, but I don't want to. Okay. Uh, Robert, do you have anything on that? Do you know, I believe that is a state highway.
I think that is a state highway under TDOT jurisdiction, but I don't know anything about that particular trailer, so I can't comment specifically about it.
Yeah, neither do I. Commissioner Brown.
Commissioner Brown, this is, uh, Commissioner Helton. Uh, I have been told that they could not find a wrecker service that would clean the mess up is, is what the, the trouble was. And, uh, that's, that's what I've been told on that matter.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this motion to accept the Highway Department report? If not, then I will, uh, ask all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is Warren County Sanitation Department quarterly report.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Ruble to approve.
Second, Tommy Savage.
We have a second from Commissioner Savage. Anyone want to speak to that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is the Warren County Schools Quarterly Report, it was submitted for our August meeting.
Commissioner Evans, I make a motion to accept the report.
I second.
Commissioner Evans made the motion, and I believe that was Commissioner Stout that seconded it.
Yes.
Does anyone want to speak to those motions, or that motion, I'm sorry? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, next up, Finance Department report, and this is for July, Director Cotton.
Yes, uh, you have my report, and I'll take any questions, anyone has them at this time.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion from Commissioner Carl E. Bowden.
Second, Robert Hennessy.
We have a second from Commissioner Robert Hennessy. Anyone want to speak to that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you missed one.
This Sheriff's Department. Yes. We will, uh, entertain a motion to accept the Warren County Sheriff's Department's second quarter, uh, twenty-twenty report.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Lee.
Second, Daniel Owens.
We have a second from Commissioner Owens. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Commissioner England. All right, next up is the Warren County Airport Quarterly Report.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt, Robert Hennessy.
I second.
All right, we have a motion from, uh, Commissioner Hennessy to adopt it. We have a second from Commissioner Stout, I believe, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. All right, anyone want to speak to that motion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, uh, I just noticed on my screen that, uh, Mr. Grant Swallows has joined us, and since we've done past him, I don't know if you wanted to give him a minute, uh, talk about the schools.
Yes, Grant, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure you've got. I apologize, you've already noted on your item, but if you have any news for us, we welcome that.
No problem, I don't know that I can, uh, update the status of schools in a minute. But, uh, I will say that, uh, we do have a, a board meeting tomorrow night that, uh, it seems that people are pretty excited about. So, uh, I, I will just say that, uh, I'm very proud of our school system and how we have begun the year. My report really dealt with that and how we have come back to the school, uh, and had a lot of success, being safe and still being able to educate our children. Uh, we have been very pleased with the way that, uh, we've been able to limit the spread of the virus and still be able to learn. Uh, I believe we're beginning to transition into a place to where, uh, just like we've always said, our, our goal is to get school, uh, students in school and keep them in school, because that we, that's where we know them, uh, to be successful. So, uh, we're going to be discussing that tomorrow night in our board meeting, and I appreciate all the support from County Commission and, and all that's going on in, uh, Warren County.
Thank you, Mr. Swallows.
Director Swallows.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, uh, when and where is the meeting tomorrow night?
It'll be, it will be at the, um, um, Warren County High School Auditorium. And, uh, of course, it'll be broadcast on YouTube as it has been the last several months, uh, following the governor's orders. We are limiting attendance to the first fifty, uh, that come in, but the auditorium does give us the, uh, opportunity to, to distance in there. And so anyone that wants to join up to fifty, we would be happy to have.
Okay, that was my next question. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
All right, thank you again, uh, Grant, for coming in there for us and updating us. Uh, next item is the Code Environmental Quarterly Report for September twenty-twenty.
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion from Mr. Savage.
Second.
Second. Second. Second. Carly Bowden.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Carl E. Bowden. Anyone want to speak to that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. Next up is the Warren County Commission Report on the EMA.
Motion to adopt, Michael Bell.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bell and a second from Commissioner Stout to accept the EMA report. Anyone want to speak to that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Next up, EMS Quarterly Department Report for September twenty-twenty.
I make a motion we approve.
I'll second it, second, and Steve Glenn.
All right, we have a motion for Commissioner Lee, a second from Commissioner Glenn. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item, EMS, I'm sorry, uh, Industrial Development Board Quarterly Report, September twenty-twenty.
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion from Commissioner Tyrone Sparkman.
I second, Michael Bell.
We have a second from Commissioner Bell. Anyone want to speak to that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next up is the, uh, UTTSU Extension Warren County Court Report, September twenty-twenty.
Motion to approve.
Second, Steve Glenn.
A motion from Commissioner Lee and a second from Commissioner Sweeten. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make an announcement really quick. And I would like to thank, uh, the citizens of Warren County who showed up this past Saturday. The four-H had their chicken chain sale, and this is one of the very few fundraisers they have. Since they're not having the funnel cake booth this year, they're going to be, they're going to be short of funds. But I'd just like to say thank you to all the citizens of Warren County and applaud them for their generosity. For those of you that don't know, they sell three of their chickens that they raise every year, uh, as fundraiser for four-H. And this year, uh, Mr. Prater, Mr. Philip Prater, uh, was the auctioneer, and he donated his services. And there was approximately twenty-nine hundred dollars raised at a cost per each chicken of thirty-eight dollars. And I can assure you that chickens are not valued at thirty-eight dollars. I saw some chickens sell for seventy dollars. And that just speaks to the generosity of these people who, uh, realize the importance of the four-H program. It's a very important program for school. A lot of basic building skills, uh, are developed through that program in grammar school all the way through high school. And just like to say thank you to all the citizens who participated in that, and, uh, the money will be well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruble. Anyone else want to speak? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next is committee reports, and, and what I want to do is I do want to go through these committees and, uh, allow the chairman, uh, to give us any updates, if there are any updates, uh, on these committees, and I'll start with Budget Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as I know, we don't have anything, uh, very important to report. We have got several grants that have come in, and a lot of it has to do with, uh, with COVID-nineteen. We're getting some, some of those grants in, and we will be having, Budget and Finance will be having a meeting. I know we're, we're choosing committees tonight, but they will be having a meeting. It is already planned for this Thursday at six-thirty, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh, Building and Grounds.
At this time, thank you, this Carly, but at, at this time, Building and Grounds has nothing to report, but we do have some things going on, and hopefully next month we'll have some good news to report about our dog, uh, our, our shell, our animal shelter and a few things. But, um, at this, at this meeting, we won't report anything, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Economic and Agricultural Development.
Uh, Gary Martin, Economic and Agriculture, does not have anything to report at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Education.
Yes, thank you, uh, to Grant Swallows who joined in and, and kind of gave us another report and updated exactly on, on the school situation at this time. But I do want to add to that, that, uh, it was reported that our ag barn is now complete. And, um, with everything that was outlined in the contract itself, there's still some building going on for the stalls that's going, that's actually going to be done in-house. And then while that's going on, they're planning the curriculum that will, that will be conducted at that particular facility. And I know those kids are really excited about having this ag barn. Uh, West Elementary School is still coming along, we did tour that, a few of our commissioners got a chance to go through that. And I highly encourage all of you to give Ms. Lewis a call. She will be glad to meet you and take you through a tour of that facility. You know, the next few years, there's going to be times that are going to be, we're going to be faced with continuing, uh, the capital improvement projects for the school system. And you really need to be aware of what's going on in, in these facilities to be able to make an informed decision and informed vote when, when you do vote on those things. So please take a chance. And one of the highlights, uh, highlights is the, um, the new kitchen facilities at West Elementary. It is just absolutely wonderful, and I know those kids are enjoying that cafeteria. They had not completed the computer room at the time I was there, but, um, that project is just about to come to an end. And again, we, we wish them very, we wish them good luck tomorrow night as they make this difficult decision on how to return back to school after fall break after October the twelfth. I know this is weighing heavily on the parents, the teachers, the, and, and of course, Mr. Swallows and his, his staff and the principals. And we just hope that this decision that's made will be supported and they can move forward and we can continue to accomplish our goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Next is Financial Management.
Go ahead, Justin.
Now, go ahead, I didn't have anything to report.
That's, that's what I was going to say, at this time, I don't think we have anything to report. You had something, uh, Director Cotton, to add to that.
All right, thank you. Uh, next is Health and Welfare. Basically, it was touched on, uh, about the, uh, improvements out there at the, uh, facility. They are coming along, and, uh, we're hopeful that possibly next year we can, uh, move forward with our expansion. Also, I do want to announce, uh, that this, uh, Saturday, uh, not this Saturday, but next Thursday, uh, October the third is our Adopt One program. Uh, if, if you haven't been able to come out, uh, it'd be a great opportunity from ten to twelve to come out, sponsor an animal, and let us take your picture and let us use your face, uh, to help get an animal adopted. And, uh, that's, uh, that's all we ask. And that's all I have to report on that. Next is Legislative Committee.
Uh, there's nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Policy and Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I talked to David Williams, the Judicial Commissioner Supervisor today. We talk about once a week, and everything's going smoothly now. Everybody's back at work, labor down to three out of six during the pandemic when it was at its worst. And, uh, the mandatory in-service training has been postponed until after the first of the year, and the state has waived the rules on that in-service training for now. And, uh, the, uh, judicial commissioners, they, they have a huge responsibility, and, and I'll have to give it to the guys that were part-timers. They stepped up. Two of the people that were sick were the full-time workers, and the part-timers stepped up and made sure that we didn't go without someone out there. And I'd also like to thank the Clerk and Master's Office for helping out with some of the warrants when we had so many of the judicial commissioners sick. That's all I've got to report this time, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next up is Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, our EMS has really been working hard here lately with some sicknesses and accidents. They've really been busy, but things are going well. Uh, the la, I talked to the sheriff weekly and, and, uh, everything's going well out there. I think today's number was one eighty-nine, that's all I've got to report.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Next, County Corrections Partnership.
County Corrections Partnership has nothing to report, Chairman.
Thank you. And last but not least, Redistricting Committee, Commissioner England.
Mr. Chairman, we have nothing to report at this time, and if you want to, back up to Highway Bridge, I'll give you a quick on that, if that's okay?
That's good, go ahead.
Uh, we got a bridge, it'll be starting in the North Cuts Cove, uh, we've got all that approved, uh, they probably are working now on it. Also, we're getting finished up with our last of our bush-hawing and mowing, uh, the frost will be coming in, and that'll take care of that for the year. Uh, one of the big things we want everybody to know is, is we met the other day as a committee, and we, uh, voted to set surplus equipment. So we've got a few vehicles, a backhoe, and some different things that we're going to be putting in the, uh, I believe it's the October tenth auction up at the firegrounds that Philip Prater's having for, uh, he's having an equipment sale, so if anyone, uh, would like to bid on any of the items that belong to the Highway and Bridge Department, we'd like for you to be there. And, uh, with that, I think that's got you caught up.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask Commissioner England a question, please?
Uh, yes, Commissioner.
Committee, do you, um, have a meeting on the books? Committee, do you, um, have a meeting on the books anytime soon?
Yes, ma'am. We have one this, uh, Thursday at 4 o'clock.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Uh, at this time, we don't have any old business, so we will go into new business. And the first item, uh, is item 1A, uh, to discuss, uh, the meeting format for our October, uh, full commission meeting. And, um, I will open that up right now. I could, well, let me give you a little information on my, on my end, and then Executive Haley can speak as well on what he's been working on. I have, I have contacted, uh, the Park Theater in, in case something, uh, couldn't work out, uh, for us to use the admin building next month. And I already know that we could rent the Park Theater. They're already set up, uh, with BLTV. Uh, they can actually host as many as 100 people with social distancing, uh, as required, uh, in that facility. Uh, if we, if we needed a place to meet in person and we weren't able to meet in the admin building, that would be something that I would want to do. I know, uh, several commissioners has contacted me about the need and want, uh, to get back to meeting in person, and especially, uh, when some of these items that are real critical for us to vote on, um, these, the Zoom meeting, uh, is, is, can be hard at sometimes when you're debating an issue. Uh, and, uh, so that's the information that I've got at this time. Executive Haley?
Chairman Wiltshire. Chairman Wiltshire, what would the cost be to rent the Park Theater?
$200.
Chairman, I think you asked for me to speak on that.
Yes. Yes, Executive Haley.
So we had the discussion before this meeting about the possibility of being in-person, uh, October meeting. That i- is possible. Um, there's no reason for it not to be. We just have to make sure that every commissioner, uh, feels safe in meeting in person, and that every commissioner that attends that meeting, uh, will subscribe to the county policies on, um, wearing masks and social distancing, just like it's been required in the past. So, um, you know, we'll have to limit the number of people in that room because we can't, you know, we can't effectively, we don't have a meeting space like the Park Theater that where you can distance people out as much, or even an auditorium at the school system. So we will have to limit the number of people that are in attendance, um, to a certain limit or number. But once again, in entering the building, you know, commissioners will have to do exactly what every other person who comes into the building, uh, with temperature checks and, um, and wearing the mask and doing the social distancing. So we've got all those things in place. If the, uh, the county commission will subscribe to those rules, there should be no problem with meeting in October.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Um, if I, will we be able to livestream that meeting also? So those people that are, if we meet our capacity of maybe 20 people in the audience, if that's, if that's the number that you determined, would they be able to, to view this live while we are having our meeting?
Uh, BLTV will be able to do it, but at this point, we don't have the capability in that, in that space. Uh, we don't have Wi-Fi, and we don't have the technology in place to do any kind of hybrid meeting. And so it, it would be limited, and that's, that's the issue with it as well. Um, because we don't have the technology.
Can we not go ahead and contact Ben Lowman and have that put in? I, I thought we.
Ben Lowman will be there. Ben Lowman will be there. Um, well, Joe Harvey will be there. Ben Lowman possibly could be there to do it. Uh, it will take some, it will take some, some work in order to make that happen. But as far as a hybrid meeting with people being able to, um, we don't have the capability in that room right now to do it. So, um, but Ben Lowman could be there to, uh, to try to livestream it. It'll take some moving, some equipment in. But, uh, Mr. Harvey will be there with the school system, uh, recording as he normally does.
Okay.
And, and I'll be on, or, and I can ask, um, you know, how, they may have to come over and look at the building again. So we are looking at trying to get Wi-Fi in the courtroom so we can accommodate some of these things, but, uh, we're still waiting on some numbers on that.
And also the standard, they, they would be there. Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't technically, if we meet in person, we don't technically have to livestream it as long as the, the paper, uh, is there to record what is going on. Am I correct on that?
That has been the case, but the Comptroller has issued new guidance, uh, September 1, and that is requiring livestreaming. So i- it is something we do need to do if we have the capability for it. There's an exception if you don't have the capability, so that's debatable whether or not we can pull that off. And another thing I'd like to point out.
Mr. Harvey, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Harvey just texted me and said he should be able to livestream it. He can do it from your phone as well. So we may be able to do it without a, actually having to ask Ben Lowman to come over and set up. So we'll be working on that in order to try to make that happen. Or there'll be a few things, a few hurdles, but we should be able to do that.
Okay. Robert, you were saying?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're trying to predict four weeks out what's gonna be the appropriate place, time, and, and meeting format. Uh, just want to be careful that once we resolve to do it one way, we're binding ourselves to that, and we'll, we'll legislate ourselves into a corner if it turns out four weeks down the road. That's not the best way to meet, so just be cognizant of that as we're making this decision.
Chairman Wiltshire, this is, uh, Commissioner Helton.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Helton.
I move that we meet in person in the October meeting, and we follow county protocols.
We have a motion from Commissioner Helton that we meet in, in our administrative building in October and follow.
He did not say administrative building. He said in person.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just want to correct that because that was something Mr. Bratcher was trying to point out. You don't want to tie yourself to something that we can't follow through on.
Is that, was that your intention, Stephen, just, just to be?
It was my intention. Thank you, Carleen, uh, to meet at the administration building.
It was?
It, it was my intent for my motion to be that we meet in person at the administration building, and we follow county protocol at that time.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a, a motion from Commissioner Helton. We have a second from Commissioner Tyrone Sparkman. Does anybody want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Commissioner?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, who's speaking? Uh, uh, Executive Haley?
Yes, just to hear what Robert said, what can happen between now and then. So you might want to leave that option in there if something happens between now and then, that we may have to resume a Zoom format, but we'll do our best to do what we can. But once again, if you paint yourself into a corner, you've already painted yourself out of an opportunity to meet. So, um, just, just be cognizant of that.
Uh, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Lee?
Uh, Commissioner Ruble?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ruble. He's found a while I've run.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm sure he'll forgive you for that, but, uh, Ms. Chairman, I think we need to amend that motion to, as Robert said, to put some safeguards in place, basically stating that if we cannot meet in, at the admin building, then we would move to the Park Theater. And if health issues, uh, did not permit that, that we would, uh, defer back to Zoom. And I would put that in form of a motion just for legal purposes.
A second, a second to that motion.
All right, we have a, a motion from Commissioner Ruble. We have a second from Commissioner, uh, Evans, and that is to meet, if possible, at the administrative building in October in person, following, uh, the county safety protocol, and, and/or the Park Theater. And also, if neither of those work, we will go back to Zoom. Did I state that correctly, Commissioner?
That's correct, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Does anybody want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Commissioner Helton.
Yes, Commissioner.
Uh, the rent of the facility, if we have to go to the Park Theater, do we need to do anything special regarding that $200 in order to approve that? So it's available in case we need it?
Uh, yes, I think we would have to do that. Probably, if this is approved, uh, we would have to, uh, we would have to make a motion to, uh, find the, the necessary funds in order to pay for that.
Mr. Chairman, um, just for clarity, there was a, a motion and a second on the floor, and then we have another motion and a second on the floor. So I'm curious which one it is that we're voting on? Would the other one have to be backed out? I just want to make sure.
We're voting on the amendment. If amendment passes, then we won't, we, we won't revert back to the original motion.
Okay, the amendment. Okay, it was an amendment. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can you re, read back the amendment?
Okay, the amendment is that we will meet in person following county safety protocol here at the administrative building in our full county meeting in October. If that is not possible, we will go to the Park Theater and meet there, and if that's not possible, we will revert back to Zoom. Is there any other discussion?
Ms. Chairman?
Uh, yes, uh, is this?
This is Director Cotton.
Director Cotton, I'm sorry.
Uh, I just, to speak to the, the question of, of funding, the county commission does have another charges line that has a budget amount of, uh, $2,200 remaining in it at this time. That could be used for rent if that becomes necessary.
Thank you, Director Cotton.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
Uh, first of all, thank you, Mr. Commissioner Ruble, for making that abundantly clear. I think that was the right step. I was gonna follow your, follow your lead on that. My question is to, uh, Mr. Bratcher, does this seem, uh, like a, uh, a good approach to take as far as covering our bases and not getting ourselves into a situation like we were, uh, a couple months ago?
Yes, I, I think that Commissioner Ruble's suggestion is very good because it'll permit us to have multiple contingencies if we have different types of events that would require different buildings or, or meeting methods. Um, and I would say that, you know, you, you actually don't even have to have the resolution at all, because in the absence of a resolution, you simply meet at the regular location unless Zoom is the back out. And the only reason I imagine that we would go to the Park Theater is if there's a health concern at the administrative building. So it would presumably be the same concern at the Park Theater. Uh, but the way it is phrased, it, it leaves a lot of latitude for, uh, Chairman Wiltshire and Executive Haley to get together between now and the October meeting and decide what's the best place, so best way to meet.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we're voting on the amend, amended, uh, motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. And to, to go ahead, um, uh, Robert, do we need to do anything now as far as, uh, setting up the potential, uh, line item to pay that out of? Or will that just come, uh, after, after we decide when we're gonna meet?
I'll direct that question to Director Cotton. I think he'd probably be best suited to answer that.
Okay. Director Cotton?
Uh, you already have a line item set up that'll cover it. Um, but your other charges line has enough money and is, um, open enough to accept charges, uh, in line without having a rental charge set up.
All right, thank you.
Chairman Wiltshire, this is Stephen Helton.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Helton.
Uh, we voted on the amendment, uh, to amend the main motion. I think we still have to approve the main motion if, uh, if I'm not mistaken.
You're right, exactly. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, thank you. Hopefully, we will be able to meet in person next month, unless, unless something happens. But we've got, we've done the best we can to try to make that happen, so thank you.
That's good.
All right, next item is appoint standing committees, and, uh, I will be doing the same thing that I did last year, which was, uh, I've actually.
Mr. Chairman, your, uh, next item was elect, elect the pro tem and the parliamentarian.
Yes, you're correct, uh, Commissioner Brown.
Well, this week, I mean, I know we got out of order a little bit. I just wanted to.
Yep, you're, I, I appreciate that. The 1A threw me off. Elect pro tem and parliamentarian. At this time, I would open that up for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Helton here. I would like to, uh, nominate Scott Ruble as a pro tem.
I'd like to second, I'd like to second that. What's wrong?
Carl E. Bolden, uh, for Scott Ruble to be. Hmm, some, okay, they fixed it. All right, we have a motion and a second for Commissioner Scott Ruble to, uh, be elected pro tem. Is there any other, any other motions?
I make a motion, all others cease.
All right, we have a motion that the nomination cease.
Second, Savage.
We have a, a second from Commissioner Tommy Savage. Who made the motion? Was it Carley?
Carley, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is our parliamentarian.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, a motion to, uh, nominate Daniel Owens for parliamentarian.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Ross and a second from Commissioner Hennessy, uh, to elect Daniel Owens as parliamentarian.
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Commissioner Helton. I nominate Joseph Stotts.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Helton for Commissioner Joseph Stotts.
I second that commotion. Carl E. Bolden.
From Commissioner Carl E. Bolden. Is there any other motions? All right. There's no discussion, then Lisa?
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that all nominations cease.
All right, we have a motion that nomination cease from.
I second it.
Um, I believe Commissioner Tyrone Sparkman seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Lisa, if you would, we have two nominees for parliamentarian.
You want to order that they, uh?
Yes. Yes.
All right. So the first one, Daniel Owens. Bell?
As.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bold?
As.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
As.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Steve Helton?
Pass.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Hi.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater? Christie Rose?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Pass.
Tommy Savage?
As.
Tyrone Sparkman?
No.
Joseph Stotts?
No.
Philip Sa.
As.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
As.
Anyone want to change the vote? Okay. All right, so this will be for Joseph Stotts. Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes, I mean, pass, I'm sorry.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Pass.
Casey Owens?
Pass.
Daniel Owens?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Pass.
Robert Hennessy?
Pass.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Ayes.
Deborah Evans?
Pass.
Randy England?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Pass.
Carlene Brown?
Pass.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Pass.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Okay, it's tied 11 to 11.
Okay, well, we'll have to vote again. So everybody, we're going to go through this again. We have to have a clear winner on this, so, um, I guess that's all I can say about it. So Lisa, if you would.
All right. This is for Daniel. Michael Bell?
Ayes.
Carl?
Who are we voting on?
Daniel Owens?
Ayes. I'm sorry, yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
No.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England? Randy?
No, sorry.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
No.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Ayes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Ayes.
Tommy Savage?
Ayes.
Tyrone Spartman?
No.
Joseph Stotts?
No.
Philip Stout?
Ayes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilt?
Pass.
Anyone want?
11 again. It'll be 11, 11 again.
Yep, it'll be the same difference, 11.
Okay, Robert, I'm going to have to ask your opinion on this. Is this something we can vote on again next month as we have before on other items?
Can't handle it that way. You've got to have a majority to win. If nobody's elected tonight, the prior parliamentarian simply holds that seat until the next one takes it.
Okay, I appreciate it. With that, that's what we will vote on this in October's meeting again.
Get Gary Prater on the line, let him break the tie.
Mr. Chairman? This is Cole Taylor.
Yes, Commissioner Taylor.
Uh, I just now called Mr. Prater, and he is trying to get on, but he says the host will not let him in the meeting. He said, "I have called several times," or typed in several times, and he said, "The host will not let me in."
He broke the tie.
Uh, Robert, does it just have to be a tiebreaker, or does it have to be a majority?
Uh, it's an internal designation of the commission, so a simple majority will do it.
Okay.
But, you know, he's got to be here to vote. It can't be proxy through another commissioner, you know.
Right. Did you say? Okay. Yeah, we're looking. We're looking for him now, but he's not showing up here on the screen.
Okay, give me one second, I'm calling him right back.
He's trying to get on.
Mr. Chairman, we need to move forward.
Well, I mean, I don't mind giving him a few minutes, not a few minutes, but a minute to get through.
Yep, I've been on there.
He was on there earlier and dropped off. He may have a bad signal. Lauren's looking at it right now. Now he's on.
Yeah, he said he was just calling.
Yep, she's got him in. Commissioner Prater, are you with us? Commissioner Prater? He is showing on the screen, but we don't have audio.
We'll have to move on.
All right, at this time, I, Commissioner Prater? All right, we're going to have to move on, and we will vote on this again next month. There's probably some difficulties on his side, on his phone line. All right, next item is appoint standing committees, and I've spoke with both Ben Rogers and Charles.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, Commissioner.
Ron Lee. Listen, I know you might not have read the county's etchers report, but Warren County is being recognized by the state of Tennessee as a well-run county, and I would like to make the motion that we keep our committees as is. If we're being recognized by the state of Tennessee for doing a good job, we don't need to change anything unless somebody's got a personal agenda or political favors. I think we need to keep it just like it is.
Well, I appreciate that, but I, as chairman, I have the right to present a list, and that is what I'm going to do, and then, of course, people will vote on it. And that is, that will be the right of the commission. And so, you know.
So we're not going to vote on my, we're not going to vote on my recommendation?
Well, have you put that in a form of a motion?
I have. I put it in form of a motion that we keep our committees as they are.
All right, we have a motion.
I second that motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ron Lee to keep the committees as they are, and we have a second from Commissioner Evans. And I will mention that I have also already put, in my list, I have added the new Commissioner Casey Owens to two committees, and I've also made a spot for the incoming commissioner. So I don't know how that will work, but we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, if there's no?
This is Casey Owens, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Owens.
With what you were saying, I was wondering how that would leave me with not being in any previous committees, Mr. Lee.
You would step in to the committees that was previously held by your predecessor.
Okay, I didn't know. Thank you.
I can't say that for sure, Commissioner Owens. That's something I would have to talk to, you know, somebody at seat task to make sure about. That sounds correct, but I do not want to tell you that tonight, and that not be the case.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Can we ask the county attorney if he knows?
Uh, Robert, would you like to speak to that?
There is no set rule either way about how that works. If you want to place Commissioner Owens into her predecessor's role, that simply needs to be part of the motion, and that would happen that way.
Commissioner Wiltshire, or Chairman Wiltshire?
Yes, Commissioner Hilton.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but because she is replacing Richard, we already filled Richard's positions, so therefore there's not any open positions. Correct me if I'm wrong on that.
That is right.
So therefore, there's no positions available for Casey to fill because Richard's, were already filled.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Commissioner Savage?
The position that Richard was in on building the grounds, I was appointed two months ago to that position, but that left an open position of where I was at on another committee.
Right.
So I assumed that that would be where that Commissioner, new Commissioner Owens, would be placed on that committee.
Possibly.
Mr. Wiltshire?
Yes, Commissioner Brown.
As Mr. Bratcher alluded to, setting committees is truly up to this commission. This is our job, our committee's how we want them structured. By developing rules in our legislative policy, we would have rules that we would follow, but there, what we want to do is, is it totally up to the commissioners? His motion to, as, his motion to accept these committees as the way they are, I would think that we could do that, and then at the next meeting, you could present a list that would show exactly where Casey was placed. But I noticed that Lori Judkins was on Health and Welfare, so there's an opening there, so there's a possibility you could go ahead and put Casey on that particular committee.
Possibly, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Ruble.
It has been customary, and I think the county executives would agree, that it has been customary in Moore County over, as far as we can remember, that the chairman of the commission presents the list, and by, and I respect Commissioner Lee, but by following this motion, it is going to cause great confusion with the fact that Ms. Owens is now on the commission. I don't know, this is going to be a chess game, and it's going to be a huge issue. I just don't, I don't see how we can do this clearly without you making the recommendations. And as I stated earlier, it has been customary that the county executive produces a list, and the commission votes to approve or reject that list.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Carl E. Bolden, yes.
It's always been the chairman of the commission, he's always presented his list for a long, long time, and I recommend that we listen to your recommendations, whatever they are, and then we got a chance to vote on it after that. And that'd be my recommendation, is that we listen to it. I respect what the other people have said 100%, but it's, I think we ought to go with your list and vote on it after that.
Mr. Chairman, Robert, here to see, may I speak?
I'm on now.
All right, Commissioner Bolden?
Commissioner Wiltshire?
Yes, hold on just a second, Commissioner Hennessy. Carl Lee, were you saying something when Gary come in?
Yeah, I did say that I'd like to put that in the form of a motion that we, you present your list, and we vote on it as we've always done in the past.
Mr. Chairman, we cannot make that motion because we already have a motion on the floor.
Right, the only thing that can be done is that motion can be amended. That is the only thing that can be done. You're correct, Daniel.
Somebody tell me what the motion on the floor is.
Okay, let me restate, the motion that was made by Commissioner Ron Lee was to keep all committees as they were this previous year, and it was seconded by Commissioner Evans. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think you need to clarify to Commissioner Prater the problems that will ensue if we do that with Ms. Owens now joining the commission. That's going to cause a lot of confusion. If you would clarify that to Commissioner Prater?
Well, we have, actually, we will have two new commissioners besides Mr. Owens. We will have another new one in November, and on my list, I've already made a position for the new commissioner coming in in November, and also for Commissioner Owens. And I'm not sure exactly how this fits in with me as chairman presenting a list, which is what, as I've spoke with Charles Curtis as late as today, about that as chairman, and we don't have any rules at this time, traditionally, as Commissioner Ruble said, the chairman, which traditionally has been the county executive, with the exception of Sally Brock several years ago, would present a list of what his or her recommendations were, and then they would be voted on, up or down, and then if there were any changes, then that would follow with amendments or other motions. But Gary, Commissioner Prater, we have a motion right now from Commissioner Ron Lee that we keep the committees the same as they were this previous year, and we have a second from Commissioner Evans.
Okay.
Does anybody?
So what we're going to vote on? We're going to vote on yes or no to keep it, you know, the same or to change?
Well, no, we, right now, we only have a motion and a second, and the only thing that can alter that is an amendment to the original motion. That's it. Other than that, there is nothing else to vote on.
Mr. Wiltshire, I think Mr. Hennessy was trying to say something to.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
My question is this, simply. This list of committees at present is a list that was compiled by you last year, and the county commissioners had the opportunity at that time, when you submitted your list, to make recommendations and changes, and the whole commission got to vote on that. Is that correct?
That is correct, that we were in a live meeting at that time, yes.
Okay, now, is this the way that this is going to play out when we get your list? Are we going to have an opportunity as a commission, a collective group, to make changes and vote?
You will have the opportunity to vote it up or down, or make changes, just as you did last year.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Wiltshire? Commissioner, Chairman Wiltshire?
Yes, Commissioner Lee.
All right, everything else we get as commissioners, we get a 10-day notice in advance, so we're prepared for our meetings. Why are we not having, why did we not get this list 10 days ago so we could study and think about it? That's all I need to ask. Thank you.
I'm glad you asked that, Ron. I have been advised by Charles Curtis, and I've also spoke to Ben Rogers last year, and nothing has changed. They recommend not doing that. That is, that is close to bribery, I guess is a nice way of saying it, because you basically lay out where you're going to put people, and then they can kind of, you know, try to move around depending on where they want to be. And Charles Curtis told me that he would not present the list until he was in the meeting, and that's what I'm doing. I'm doing the same thing I did, unfortunately, I'm not live, I mean, I'm not in person, so I can't give you a physical list. What I can do is go over the list, and go over the list committee by committee, and then we vote on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we will be able to vote, like, person by person, should that be the case, or as a committee as a whole? Is that correct? It's not like all one big bulk thing, and it's, right?
I cannot predict what the motion will be. You know, we already have one motion right now.
Sure, okay.
Yes, I mean, that's possible. Right.
Thank you.
So right now, we have a motion to keep the committees the same as they were last year with no changes, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Can I amend that motion?
Uh, Commissioner Evans?
To add Casey Owens to Health and Welfare Department and to the other opening that Tommy Savage mentioned? Add her to those committees? In addition to the, keep the committees the same way.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the original motion to put Casey Owens in the absence, the absence created by someone in Health and Welfare. in the absent, the absence created by someone in Health and Welfare. And what committee was that? Tommy Savage that she's speaking to now?
The Economic and Agricultural Committee.
Mr. Chairman, this is Michael Bailey.
Yes.
If we do that, we're going to come up with the same situation when November rolls around. That commissioner will now have no committee.
You're correct.
Mr. Chairman, also to clarify on the original motion, it is literally impossible, I think, as Commissioner Lee stated, to keep the committees the same as they were last year. It is literally impossible for that to take place because we do not have the same commissioners that we had last year. And I just want to make sure we're, we're, everything's legal when we, when we make these motions and vote.
Mr. Commissioner Prater, let's call for the question.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Ah, yes, Commissioner Evans.
So you, if we place Casey Owens in the two that I mentioned, now, so you, you filled, you filled Richard Grissom's spots when it wasn't, it wasn't the meeting to do the committees. Can we not do that after November, at the November meeting when we have a new commissioner? Because you were able to do that with Richard Grissom, with his spots. Why can we not do that then?
We can. I think at this time, we need to vote on that original motion. And if it passes, then we'll have that set. If it doesn't, then we'll have to, we'll have to, we'll have to entertain another motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask our attorney's opinion on the wording of that original motion because, as I said earlier, there is no possible way we remain the same because we do not have some members here that, that are still on the commission. We have, we've lost a couple of members.
Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the way I understood Chairman Lee's motion was not to try and reinstate the committees as they existed September 2019, but to just make no changes to the current committees as they are today. And then the way I understood the amendment was to install Commissioner Casey Owens into the Economic and Agricultural Development and the Health and Welfare Committees. That's, that's the way I understand the current motions, and I don't think that would have any legality. You would have trouble if you tried to say, we want the exact same setup we had in September 2019 started over now because there will be problems with that. But if the motion is just that, we make no changes as to the way the commission committees are today, that'd be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Robert.
All right, at this time, if there's no other discussion, then I think we need to vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Need to clarify, Mr. Chairman, what we're voting on?
We're voting on the motion from Commissioner Ron Lee to keep all committees the same as they were at the time of the, before the previous election. And basically, we'll find a position for Commissioner Owens on those additions created. Is that correct, Robert?
Well, I defer to Commissioner Lee, but the way I understood it was that he's making a motion that we make no changes to the current committees. And then the amendment was that we install Commissioner Casey Owens, Economic and Agricultural Development into Health and Welfare.
The amendment, Commissioner Evans, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, did Commissioner Evans get a second on her amendment?
Yes.
Yes, by Commissioner Brown.
And also, I request a roll call vote on this.
Yeah, we're going to have to. I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm trying to catch up to everybody that's chiming in, but it's hard on this thing. All right, so Ron, does that, does that motion, is that fit with what you were, were intending? Then, Ms. Evans, with your amendment?
Yes, sir.
Yes, to make no changes and to install Commissioner Casey Owens on Health and Welfare and Economic and Agriculture.
That's right.
All right. Lisa, I've asked you to call the roll backwards.
Mr. Chairman. You had to vote on the amendment first.
Lisa, are you ready to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Lane Wilcher?
No. No.
Philip Stout?
No.
Joseph Stotts?
No.
Tyron Spartman? Tyron Spartman?
No, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry. Tommy Savage?
No.
Scott Ruble?
No.
Kristi Ross?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
No.
Casey Owens?
No.
Owen's?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Ethan Hilton? You said yes.
That is correct.
Thank you. Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Randy England?
No.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Carl E. Bowden?
No.
Carl DeBolt?
No.
Michael Bell?
No.
Anyone want to change?
I got a good band this week, too. We got Johnny Garcia from God Brooks. Band, hell of a guitar.
Gary Prater, your microphone is on.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'll just try to keep it down, Carleen.
Okay, it's 10, yes.
He's advertising a band.
Go ahead, Lisa.
10, yes, 10, no.
Okay, motion, the amendment fails. So now we go back on the original motion, which is to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ron or Robert, the original motion was to keep the committees the same as they were prior to tonight.
Yeah, just make no changes to the committees.
Make no changes to the committees. And we're going to do a, a roll call vote on this also. And, and I, I would request that, that I go first.
Mr. Wiltshire, to clarify, a yes vote would mean what?
Would mean that we would keep the committees as they were originally. In other words.
Okay, thank you. Just, just clarify.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
To clarify, we just determined that we couldn't do that through legal. Is that correct?
Yes, the, the main motion is to keep the committees as they are today. Make no changes at the meeting. You're simply reenacting them for another year as they exist right now.
So is that legal?
My question is, is that legal with, without Casey being on there?
Yes, you'll have to probably have a meeting or a motion next month to put her on committees, but it will, it would keep the one.
Does everybody understand that?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Savage.
Yes, at what point will we vote on the list that the chairman has recommended?
We, we will not vote on it if this vote passes, correct, Robert?
That's correct. If this vote passes, that will be the installation of the committees.
Thank you.
So we are voting on the, on the resolution to keep, keep the committees just like they are right now?
Yeah, yes, and not to review my list, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
If you're for it, you're a yes vote. If you're against it, you're a no vote, right?
Correct. Commissioner Evans?
I, I have a question. I don't know if you have the answer, or perhaps the county attorney does. So would that mean, would there have to be an opening next month? Would there have to be an opening similar to place Commissioner Casey Owens on a committee? Or how would that work? I don't want to leave her off of any committee. You know what I'm saying? That's what I want to make sure. If I vote to keep it the same, does that mean Commissioner Casey Owens will not be on any committees?
If I may, yes. Right now, she would not have a committee seat at all. Since the amendment failed, she doesn't go on the two proposed committees. She would need to be installed into a committee next month without fail. And you can shuffle some moves around to do that. Or if this fails and there are new proposals from the chair, she will have some seats in those.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and to clarify, and I'm not saying that I'm insinuating that this happened, but according to state statute, my understanding is that a commissioner does not have to be on any committee. But I'm not saying, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that that, according to the law, that there is, there's no requirement to be on any committee, is my understanding.
That's correct.
If she's not installed to a committee tonight, there's no laws being broken. It, it breaks the precedent of our commission to have somebody without a committee assignment, but there's no legal problem with it.
Call the question.
All right, question's been called. I'll second it. All in favor?
We got a vote on it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
All right, we have, we, we have some opposition. Lisa, would you call the roll?
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, I think there may be some confusion as to whether we're voting on the amendment or, or whether we're voting on the motion or whether we're voting to call question.
We're voting to call question on the discussion of that motion that is left.
Mr. Bratcher.
Yes. Yes.
Carleen, he's, he's, Robert's ready.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wiltshire, we do not have to vote on that. We call for the question.
Yes, he, he did call the question and question was voted on, and so that ends discussion. So now we're back on the original motion. And I'm, you know, I'm trying to stay, Robert, clarify if I'm wrong. The original motion was made to leave the committees the same as they were before we start this meeting tonight.
That's right.
And with that, obviously, as chairman, that will mean I will not present a list. If it passes. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. All right, Lisa, will you call the roll?
Now, wait just a minute. Are you, yes, if you for it, or no, if you want, no vote if you want to present your list, right?
Yes, if you want to accept the committees as they were before this evening. That is, Commissioner, a motion, yes, we'll be voting yes to do that.
Yeah, okay.
All right, Lisa, call the roll, please.
And you want to go first? Is that your deal?
Yeah, why not?
Condition, okay. Lane Wiltshire?
No.
Cole Taylor?
No.
Philip Stout?
No.
Joseph Stotts?
No.
Tyron?
Who's that?
No.
Oh. I can't hear.
I can't either.
No.
Kristi Ross?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
No.
Casey Owens?
No.
Daniel Owens?
No.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Randy England?
No.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Carl E. Bowden?
No.
Carl DeBolt?
No.
Michael Bell?
No.
Anyone want to change your vote? Right, none, yes, 14, no.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Bowden.
As you can tell, we spent an hour on two things, and it, that was the biggest cluster I've ever seen. But, um, the committees that you're, we had so much confusion deciding this. The committees that you're going to give us, we need it, as Mr. Hennessy or Mr. Lee once said. We need that in front of us. I would like to make a motion that we able to appoint committees. Since you have been elected chairman, in the next two weeks, you give us the list that you have presented. We have an opportunity at least five to seven days to look at it before we come into our next meeting. And the very first thing on the agenda is to do the committees. We leave the committees as they are today for one more month. That's not going to kill us. And then we vote on, got it in front of us, and it's not this mass confusion.
I would like to second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Carl D. Bowden and a second from Commissioner Ross that we postpone the appointing of committees until our next meeting. And I will provide the list. And I, and I will, if, I will contact CTS and make sure that that is okay since I have been elected chair. And it should be okay now that I'm already chair to do that. Robert, you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think this is fine.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Robert. Mr. Bratcher, in the event that, and my understanding, these are annual appointments. In the event that we, we cannot go another month, and after the fact of this meeting, we already have, will, will there be any legal implications? Because according to what I'm reading in, in state statute is that we are supposed to appoint committees on an annual basis. But is that one month not going to cause any confusion or, or any legal implications due to us delaying this another month?
The failure to make any appointments just results in the prior seat holder maintaining that seat until the appointment is. As we have done appointments at the beginning of a four-year term and just let them untouched for four years. So I don't think there'll be any issue with waiting the additional month to have the list.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, is there any other discussion? All right, does everybody understand the motion? The motion is to postpone committees until our October meeting. And I will provide a list for review at least, at least a week, if not more, prior to our meeting for review, if, if, if that is appropriate. All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No. No.
No.
No.
Mr. Chairman, please call rocks. Mr. Chairman, please call rocks.
Lisa, roll.
All right, Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes, ma'am.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
England?
No.
Deborah?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
No.
Christie?
No.
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
No.
Tommy Savage?
No, ma'am.
Tyrone Spartman?
No.
Joseph Stotts?
No.
Philip Stout?
No.
Cole Taylor?
No.
Blaine Wiltshire?
No.
Want to change?
Lisa?
Yes.
Yes, Lisa, Miss Lisa?
Yes.
Lisa, Carl Bolden, I'd like to change my vote to a no, please, ma'am.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thirteen yes and ten no.
Okay, motion passes, so we will, I will work on a list and, and get it to everyone, and we can address this at our next full meeting in October. Thank you. All right, next item is the Financial Management Committee appointments, and I, I, if, if possible, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we keep those the same with basically the commissioners that were on it, with the exception, if I can look at the list here I have down, Gary Martin, Scott Ruble, Daniel Owens, and myself. As the commissioners.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to keep those four members of the commission on the Financial Management Committee. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion, motion carries. Next item is item number four, and that is the Adopt Cares Act reimbursement of $613,170.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Carl.
Second, Steve Glenn.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Steve Glenn to approve the reimbursement. Any discussion?
Chairman, this is Director Cotton.
Director Cotton.
Um, is that motion to also appropriate the, um, the spending of the $613,170 and $170 in funds, so that we can then ask for reimbursement? If there's not enough reimbursement cost already outstanding?
Director Cotton, I would like for you to clarify what that expenditure consists of for the information at the court.
Uh, that's just it, there's not, um, this is a reimbursement from the state on expenses that have already been made, or that will be made in response to COVID-19 before December 31st. That being said, any money that has not already been spent, we have to submit the reimbursement request, I believe, by the first day of November. So if there's no money appropriated from the $613,000 for funds that have yet to be spent, we're going to have about an 11-day window to start all those projects prior to our reimbursement request.
All right, so.
Director Cotton, have a question for Director. Daniel Owens?
Go ahead, Commissioner Owens.
Uh, I was in a meeting with Mr. Curtis and Mr. Rogers the other day, and they said the Comptroller and the state have suggested the Horn Group on getting approval on spending before you do actually spend the Cares Act. Can you clarify?
Yes, we, yes, they have. The Horn Group has been contracted by the state to do all the approval on any reimbursement request. County Executive Haley is in contact with them as primary contact for the county on the Cares Act funds. Um, and that, that is the plan, any, any funds that have yet to be spent, we would get free approval prior to spending from them. And then any money that would be outlaid would go through the normal purchasing procedures as, as any other county funds that are being spent.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right, so would the commissioner that made the motion, would, would you like to amend the motion to suit what Director Cotton specified, or how do we need to go about that, Robert?
Here, I would defer to Director Cotton about how to handle this. He's going to be most well-versed in doing these.
Justin, how would we, that motion need to be changed?
Um, it, it would just need to be changed to include the appropriation of funds that are pre-approved by the Horn Group, um, prior to allocation of those funds. I believe should be enough to put us in the right with the Comptroller, and then as, after the deadline or in October, when we have a better idea, we can put an actual line item, a budget together in the, in our full budget that would detail each thing as per the chart of accounts that we operate under.
All right, would the commissioner that made the motion like to restate the motion to include that?
If, if I'm the one that made it, yes, I would love to do that. However, Mr. Cotton wants to word it, will suit me fine.
Um, I, I think you'll have to make the motion, Carl, basically mentioning that Director Cotton, you know, will specify what he had mentioned in his discussion.
Okay, yeah, that will be fine. That'll be fine. Yes, sir. Don't have a problem with that. I'd like to make the motion that Director Cotton will make the final decision on how the money is to be, whatever, spent, however it needs to be worded.
And we had a.
I would recommend that.
Go ahead, go ahead, Justin.
Um, just, just because of the, the, the nature of appropriations and, and the way that works, as far as the county legislative body goes, I would recommend the motion be that the funds be appropriated pending preapproval by the Horn Group. That way you're not giving me control over $600,000 that's not been appropriated.
Okay. That's fine.
All right, we have a motion, and we, who, who seconded that motion?
I did, Steve Glenn.
All right, we'll have to have a roll call vote on this.
Mr. Chairman, Daniel Owens? Should we check with the county attorney to make sure we can take the wording from Justin in that form of a motion? We are talking like Justin said, $613,000.
Uh, yes, Robert, again.
Yes, I think the way Director Cotton worded it is, in, in all respects, correct. The, the inclusion that we were lacking is that it's been appropriated and not just accepted from the Cares Act.
Thank you.
It's all pending from the group, the Horn Group. So, yes, I think it's fine if we can do that the way he's worded it.
Thank you. All right, is there any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yeah, yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes, ma'am.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater? Gary Prater? Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Gary Prater? Anyone want to change? Twenty-two yet.
Thank you, motion passes. Next item is item number six, a resolution number seventeen dash, I'm sorry, resolution number sixteen dash 2020.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we can meet in person next month.
I second it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, and a second from Commissioner Randy England to table the, this vote on the legislative rules and regulations until we're able to meet in person.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Owens.
I understand it's a late night, but I would like to hear why he would like to table it besides meeting in person. We're not even guaranteed for that. We've got five commissioners that spent over a year working on this, and we would like to at least talk about it, even if we adopt portions of it. That would be heads ahead of where we need to be.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Stotts.
I do believe we've had a motion and a second.
That we have. Is there any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would be glad to answer that question. I have, I've spoken. We, we tend to insert his name commonly, but I talked to our county Commissioner Association President, Mr. Charles Curtis, and Charles informed me, or, or we discussed, and, and he, he was on the same page that I was. He said, this is a very important set of rules that we are adopting. This is something that we're going to be holding on to for years. I know it's a, it's a living, working document. But his opinion was that if you adopt these rules online, and you can see there's been great confusion tonight continually, and his opinion was if we adopt these online, he said you could, and I, I think I'm quoting him, but, but I don't take this as a straight quote, but he said that you could possibly be in worse shape with the rules that you pass in an online meeting than you, than you would if you didn't have any rules at all. So I just, there's been a lot of confusion tonight, and I know that in person, we have a lot clearer understanding of what is being presented. And I know even with motions tonight, it's been confusing as to what yes and what no is, and I just want to make sure, and I am not in any way saying that I'm opposed to these rules, but I think that, that in person be the place to do this.
Mr. Wiltshire?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Brown.
I did.
I, I was told today that this might happen tonight, so I certainly, that was really one of the main reasons that I wanted to make sure we knew whether there's going to be a possibility of an in-person meeting next month, since that's what Scott is really referring to, that we have that kind of meeting. I, I really hate seeing us put this off, but if this is the, the wishes of this commission, I would like to amend his motion to state that if we put this off to the October meeting, that the original five members of that committee are the ones who follow through with this document. We're, we're talking about a year's worth of work that truly, you know, has been postponed for a couple, you know, for the last meeting being canceled too. But it was, it was work that went through every single line, every single word of the document that was previously developed years and years ago. Manuals from other counties referencing Tennessee code annotated laws, phone calls to, to Mr. Rogers, to Mr. Curtis, referencing their resolutions, and then going over, meeting with the different committees to create the, the committee descriptions. And I, I would just really like to see that we add, we allow this committee to, with that knowledge and that, that they worked on, that we follow through with this as, for the first document to get something passed. And then, of course, you know, it would be monitored over the years, but it's not a committee that would meet all the time after it is passed, because it would only have to, that committee would only meet according to these rules if a new, a rule is questioned, or changed, or amended, or if the federal government even, I mean, our local government, state government amends something. So my, I'm, I'm going to amend his motions by saying that if this motion passes, that the original legislative committee is the one that presents the document to the full court.
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Spartman.
I've got a question. I think you already got a second on this, and I think we will head, roll call vote on this.
Well, she, she has made, Commissioner Brown has made a, a motion to amend it, to keep the committee that is currently.
You don't, you don't have a second on that?
I second it.
Well, we do now. We have a second from Commissioner Evans. Robert, I would like to ask you a question. How will this conflict, or will it conflict with what we've decided on me being able to present a list of my committee recommendations?
Yeah, I do not think it will conflict with it. I think, you know, if this were to pass next month, it will pass after your committee recommendations are made. I just don't think there's going to be any conflict.
Mr. Chairman? My interpretation of this amendment is that this committee would remain intact and would oversee this document until it was passed, and I cannot see how that could not conflict with next month's appointments.
Okay, I understand the question. You're saying if we move new people onto the legislative committee, they're the ones that are proposing the, the rules?
No, I'm just stating what Commissioner Brown has made a motion to amend the, amend the motion is stating to keep the committee as it is now until they present the document. Am I correct, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, my question is if, if something were to happen, and we know we're having situations, but if, if this document is not presented for two months, then once your committees are put in place, it looks like we would have some, some legal issues there.
That, that could be a problem. It could be conflict.
My question to that would be, why would anybody want to change this committee as much time as we have put into it? And I might be one you're pulling off, I don't know. But we, we spent an entire year, and I'll be honest with you, my six years on the commission, this has been the most productive committee I've ever been on. So I don't know why anybody would want to change it. That's just a personal opinion that amounts to nothing.
I have a question too, Commissioner Ruble. How do you know? How do you know what Chairman Wiltshire's appointees are going to be? How do you know that they're different?
Uh, to clarify, Ms. Evans, I, I, I'm not saying that the committee would change, but if it does, my question was to Robert, if Commissioner Wiltshire's appointments were to change, then would there be a conflict? I'm not saying that there is, and I would agree with Commissioner Bolden. There have been a lot of great accomplishments. This, this is a huge document, and I think everybody on that committee has done a great job. I was just trying to clear ourselves from any legal issues if there were to be changes.
If there were to be changes, you'd have two conflicting resolutions. If there were to be changes, you'd have two conflicting resolutions that are contrary to one another. It would be a problem, yes.
Commissioner Ruble, I, I do have a, another.
Commissioner Evans, let's acknowledge you. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Bolden have said, and the other three, they have worked diligently, sometimes twice a month, and a lot of time on their own time, working on this document for all of us. As she said, they have utilized the previous one we had, and they've utilized other counties. They have been advised by, and Rogers and Charles Curtis, and our county attorney, Barbara Bratcher. It has gone through reviews by those people, and as commissioners, we have had months, months to read this and absorb it and raise questions. So I don't understand why we can't just vote on it tonight.
Well, that's where we're at right now. We have a motion to table it as a second, and then we have a motion to amend it, as Ms. Ms. Brown has stated, uh, to keep the commit, the committee the same until these documents are voted on. Am I correct again, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, that's, that's correct. And one way to simplify that would be for you to, well, we could change, after the, after it is adopted, then we could make changes to your committee assignments if you choose that you think that's what needs to be done. Or, but at your next committee presentation, you would probably, if this passes, you would want to keep those committee members the same until, um, the document is passed to keep things legal as recommended by Mr. Bratcher. Is that correct, Mr. Bratcher?
Well, i- if I could jump in.
Yeah.
Uh, I just took a quick glance at Robert's Rules of Orders and, uh, motions to table are subsidiary motions that cannot be amended, so it, it more or less does away with the conflict.
Okay, all right. So we're back on the motion to table with the second. Is that correct? All right. We're back on the motion to table this until October's meeting, and we have a second, and, uh.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, my motion was to, uh, delay until we could meet in person.
I'm sorry, you, yes, the motion is to delay the vote on, uh, the legislative rules until we're able to meet as a commission body in person, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
I do a roll call vote, sir.
Yes, we'll have a roll call, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
No.
David Dunlap?
No.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
No.
Steve Glenn?
No.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
No.
Ron Lee?
No.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
No.
Casey Owens?
No.
Gary Prater? Christie Ross?
No.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Thirteen yes, nine no.
All right, motion is tabled until our next, uh, in-person meeting. All right, resolution number seventeen dash twenty twenty bond resolution with refunding report and preliminary refunding analysis with an estimated savings of fifty thousand eight hundred eighty-three and fifty-four cents. I'm sorry, who spoke? Do we have a motion?
I might get motion stayed planned.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion to open discussion. I think Mr. Gibson is here to inform us on that.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gibson, we have a motion and we have a second, uh, to open discussion on that.
Yes, this is Scott Gibson. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, you do have a motion on the agenda tonight. The two thousand fourteen bonds, uh, are outstanding. They have interest rates slightly above two percent. We went out and did RFP to several local and regional banks, uh, to see if we could get that rate lower. Uh, US Bank came back with the rate of one point zero two. And because the loan is, or the bond issue is so short and small, the bank option is the best route to achieve the maximum savings, so we'll be basically cutting the rate from a little over two to one point oh two. And by doing that, we can pick up about ten thousand dollars a year savings for the next five years for a total of fifty thousand bucks. If you implement this tonight, we will get that in process and hopefully have the bond issue or the new loan closed by, uh, mid-October.
All right, Commissioner Ruble, was that a motion to approve this?
Yes, sir. I had, I, I think I was the second, actually.
I, I, I made that motion stayed planned, Ed.
Commissioner Glenn made the motion we approve, and Commissioner Ruble seconded the motion to approve resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty. Any other discussion? Call the roll please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
I can't hardly hear you, but yes.
Okay. Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-two yet.
All right, motion passes twenty-two, uh, to zero. Next item is amendment GF-FY, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-one dash one.
Most to approve.
A motion to approve from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak to that. Uh,
Yes.
What this, uh, what this amendment consists of is, um, basically the reason we had to do the amendment is after we passed, uh, this year's budget, we actually considered the charitable contributions list, and these are the changes that were made in the charitable contributions list after the budget was passed. Uh, it passed, uh, five-oh in our committee, and I, and that's why I made the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, Lisa, call the roll please.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden? Carl D. Bolden?
Ms. Scott, uh, Carl D. Bolden just sent me a text message saying that he was locked out of the meeting, and he requests that Lauren let him back in. He cannot enter the meeting.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilt-
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
What are you voting on now? Because I just now got back on.
Amended, uh.
I'm sorry, we're, we're voting on amendment, uh, item number seven, amendment GF-FY twenty twenty-one dash one, the general fund amendment to correct nonprofit allocations.
Yes.
Does anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-two yet.
Motion passes. Next item is item number eight, uh, amendment GF-FY twenty twenty-one dash two, uh, general fund amendment to transfer funds from jail to sheriff to procure services and facilitate the institution of a certified officer in the jail during business hours.
Most approved.
Second by Robert Hennessy.
And we have a second from Commissioner Hennessy. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would. Uh, what, what has happened here, uh, sheriff has decided that he needs a certified officer on duty at all times at the jail or during, during daylight business hours, typical business hours. And what he has done is taken, since we went to contracted services on food services, uh, the cafeteria personnel line item had thirty-seven thousand six oh seven eighty-five, and he has, uh, asked to move that, and, uh, from fifty-four to ten, uh, line item seven sixteen, there's an additional sixteen thousand for law enforcement equipment, and that is to pay the salary of a certified officer there during the day. Uh, I talked to, uh, Major Walker, and according to Major Walker, my understanding is that once this position is filled, that we should be pretty much fully staffed at the jail and in need of no more employees at this time. Uh, it passed our committee five-oh, and I still move.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Uh, Lisa, call the roll please.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Absolutely, yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes, ma'am.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Sa-
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Next item is item number nine, approve, uh, planning commission appointments, uh, Executive Haley.
Yes, uh, Chairman, uh, there's, uh, two reappointments to be made, and that's, uh, Steve Glenn, County Commissioner Steve Glenn, and then, uh, Robert Collier. So I would make that recommendation to reappoint them, uh, to the plan commission. They've been very successful in our endeavors uh, on that commission and have brought professionalism to it, so I would, uh, recommend that those two appointments be, um, be made.
Most approved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Ruble.
Second from Michael Bell.
We have a second from Commissioner Bell. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next is item number ten, approve bond for assessor of properties.
Most approved.
Second.
Commissioner Ruble, a second from?
Carl E.
E.
Carl E. Bolden. Anyone want to speak to that motion? All right, Lisa, call the roll please.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Christie Ross? Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-two, yes.
Motion passes. Next item is item number eleven, approval of notaries. Go.
All right, this is the list for the notaries. Carly Wolf, Lindsay M. Bryant, Holly Bane, Lisa Davis, Austin Mize, Ellen M. Pilcher, Stacy Sanders, Emily Stefanic, Deana Graham, S. Mark, Michelle King, Jennifer Aaron, Sherry McGinnis, John M. Moore, Kim Frye, Deanna Jones, Shannon, Sharon Patrick, excuse me, and Joyce Facker.
Move, now call it.
A motion from Commissioner Randy England. We have a second from Commissioner Evans. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, uh, under announcements, uh, are there any announcements? Uh, I would like to say, Casey, this is not a typical meeting, so, uh, it will get better. Um, and, uh, I promise you, this, this is unusual.
I just want to thank you from earlier, uh, for inviting me and saying welcome, so thank you all.
Oh, you're, you're welcome. Um, with that, uh,
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Cole Taylor here.
All right, Commissioner Taylor?
I won't take but just a minute. I know everybody's wore out and tired and burnt out. First off, I'd like to say all the people that had to sit in on this meeting tonight, I'm truly sorry. Other than Commissioner, uh, it's been a disaster. Um, and, uh, but first off, I'd like to start off by saying, I didn't get to talk to Mr. Swallows earlier, but this is not necessarily coming as a commissioner, this is coming as a parent. I hope and pray that tomorrow night, we can get our kids back in school after fall break, because I have a eight-year-old son that I've watched fall behind in some areas, because I'm nor, I'm not a teacher, nor is my wife, and he's not learning nothing at home, and I hate to say that. But, uh, I hope and pray that we can get them back in school. I'm very proud of them for practicing the safety that they've done, but our numbers are going down, and I feel like that we need to get them back in school as soon as possible, because our kids deserve the best education that they can get. And I'm sorry, but homeschooling and online on a computer's not getting, not in my household anyways. Secondly, I'd like to say, this is too- Secondly, I'd like to say, this is to Executive Haley. Executive Haley, I hope and pray that we can get, work together and get our county building back open so that number one, we can have county business meetings there. Number two, that our county taxpayers can use it like they should be able to. Uh, we don't always all agree, we don't always get along, but let's quit playing cat and mouse and let's get these things open back up and let's go back to work. Thank you, sir.
Amen. Amen.
All right. I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. I'd like to say one thing. Good night, John Boy.
And I know Tommy's already laid on the bed two or three times, but we have motion of second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good night, good night, John Boy.
Aye, John Boy.
What a freaking mess.